Hello, my name is Chris Hoffman. On behalf of Empower Our Future, I would like to extend a welcome to our city council candidates and to all of you who are watching online. Empower Our Future is a Boulder-based coalition of organizations and individuals in support of local clean power. As part of our community outreach, we have been presenting Empower Our webinars on climate and energy-related topics via Zoom. Videos of previous events are available on our website, empowerourfuture.org. Tonight is the second of two Empower Hours with candidates for Boulder City Council. There are two events due to the number of candidates, and for the same reason, each program is scheduled for an hour and a half instead of one hour. Our focus is on climate and energy. Our candidates presenting are as follows. Last Thursday, we had Matt Benjamin, Lauren Folkerts, David Takahashi, Dan Williams, and Stephen Rosenblum. Tonight, we're welcoming Nicole Spear, Mark Wallach, Michael Christie, Tara Wiener, and Jack DeCarlo. We thank them all for participating and for their interest in serving the community by being on city council. We would also like to thank our affiliates who have helped to promote this event. 350.org, Boulder County, Clean Energy Action, EcoCycle, Fairview High School Net Zero, the Fairview Institute at Fairview High School, Clean Energy Action, is the League of Women Voters, New Air Colorado, Plan Boulder County, the Rocky Mountain Peace and Justice Institute, Peace and Justice Center, and Shanahan Neighbors for Climate Action. We have solicited questions from the community and from our affiliated organizations and have received lots of questions. In the interest of time and to avoid duplication, we've been able to consolidate most of these questions into a few questions. We are sorry that we will not be able to take additional questions live during the session. These sessions are being recorded. They will be posted on the Empower Our Future website on the events page, where you can also find recordings of prior Empower Hours. Look for them to appear a day or so after the event. We have given the candidates in advance a summary of the sort of questions they can expect, though in most cases not the exact wording. The process will be this: Each candidate will have two minutes to introduce themselves. Candidates, please unmute yourself when it's your turn to speak. Then I will ask a question and call on the candidates one at a time to answer it. Each candidate will have up to two minutes to answer the question, except for question number five, for which they will have three minutes. Again, please unmute yourself to speak. After the first round, I will move on to the next question and start the answers with a different candidate. We have randomized the orders so that each candidate will have at least one chance to go first and at least one chance to go last in answering a question. We have a fact-checking team, and they may periodically update me with pertinent information. We will have a timer for the speakers on one of the visible screens. The timer bar will change color when 30 seconds remain and sound some bells when it is time to stop. In fairness to all, we need to be firm about time limits, and we reserve the right to mute speakers who go over time. In answering these questions, to the extent possible, please let us know what you see as a wish list, what you see as a roadmap, and what you see as a plan. A wish list describes a bunch of strategies that could lead to lower greenhouse gas emissions, but no commitment to implement. A roadmap goes further. It charts out a route of strategies that would lead to the desired reductions if implemented. And a plan tells constituents what will be done, what will happen, when it should happen, what the expected results should be, and who to hold accountable. So please differentiate among could, would, and will. We received a number of questions from the community about equity and environmental justice. We didn't see these questions as fitting into any single policy area because climate change disproportionately affects low-income and frontline communities in all policy areas. So we encourage candidates to discuss environmental equity in any of their responses when they deem it relevant and appropriate. As we proceed, let us bear in mind, especially as today is Indigenous Peoples' Day, that we live on the traditional homeland of the Ute, Arapaho, and Cheyenne. Let us seek to understand the history that took these lands from them and seek to understand what it means to be in right relationship with them and with this land and with all the creatures that inhabit it. Now, I'd like to give the candidates two minutes each, two minutes each, to introduce themselves, and we'll start with Nicole Spear. Nicole?
Thank you all for being here this evening, and thank you to the Empower Our Future organizers for putting this candidate form together. My name is Dr. Nicole Spear. I manage a brain imaging research facility in the Institute of Cognitive Science at the University of Colorado Boulder. I'm also a PhD scientist, a mom, and an avid volunteer. I'm an active member of First Congregational Church, the Boulder County NAACP, and my Workers Union, United Campus Workers Colorado. I volunteer with Local Homelessness Services Connector Feet Forward. I was a member of the Bixby School Board of Trustees from 2016 to 2021, and I've helped raise millions of dollars for Boulder nonprofits over the past few years. As a leader, I don't shy away from hard problems, and I'll bring my courage and inclusive leadership to city council. Last year, when the pandemic hit, dozens of jobs at my research facility and tens of millions of dollars in research projects stopped overnight. It took all of my skills to get up and running again, but my facility was one of the first of its kind in the country to reopen, and we've operated continuously since June 2020. Boulder residents have done so much in the past 50 years to make our community a beautiful place to live, work, and study, but we're now facing crises that challenge our city's ability to thrive in the coming decades. Housing costs are out of reach for many of us and leave some of us without homes. The climate crisis makes it hard to breathe and threatens floods when it rains and fires when it doesn't. And our disconnectedness from people who are different from us makes our city a place where many feel unwelcome. My leadership and management skills, my scientific training, and my ability to lead through times of crisis can help us find solutions to these challenges and to others we can't see yet. Particularly living in a climate emergency, we need leaders who can evaluate data quickly and act based on evidence, who have the courage to make hard decisions, and who have the empathy to understand different points of view. I look forward to talking with you all tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, Jack DeCarlo. Jack?
Hi, thank you for having me. My name is Jacques DeCarlo. I am a Boulder native. I was born and raised here in Boulder, and I am running for Boulder City Council on an environmental platform. I moved back to Boulder in 2019 after graduating from Western Washington University. I graduated from Western Washington University with a degree in hemp policy and sustainability. So that was understanding bringing industrial hemp to the United States market. I started this in 2017 when hemp was still technically illegal and then brought forward in 2018 under the Farm Bill. So with my studies, I understood sustainable agriculture, understanding drug policy, understanding bringing a sustainable crop to market, and then the powers that hemp brings with it as a remedial crop, as a carbon-conducting crop, as a crop that offers a bunch of sustainable tools and substitutes to timber, substitutes to certain petroplastics and that sort of stuff. So when I moved back to Boulder, I realized that Boulder was not as environmentally progressive as it claims to be. There's a lot of work that needs to be done, and if elected to city council, I will work to bring increase in solar grants to private residents, increase in solar gardens and battery storage technology to neighborhoods and houses that don't have optimal opening for solar panels on their rooftop. I want to impose a fee on single-use plastic to push away from our consumption of single-use plastic and then use the money from the fear tax to create more solar grants. And I also want to look into water conservation with gray water recycling. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And next up, Tara Wiener.
Hi, as you know, my name is Tara Wiener. I moved to Boulder with my husband and three daughters about 10 years ago. My first foray into public service was when I was appointed to a city working group called the Chautauqua Access Management Plan, where we focused on Chautauqua's traffic and congestion issues, and we came up with a free park-to-park shuttle, and that's still operating today. Then the city appointed me to the 2017 Community Culture and Safety Tax Working Group, where we worked on such great capital projects as growing gardens and community cycles, and my very favorite, the Scott Carpenter Pool remodel. And if you haven't been to that pool, it's amazing. You should go. Since last year, I've served on the Boulder Parks and Rec Advisory Board, which I love, with my combination of city of Boulder experience and my 25-plus years running my own business, immersed in manufacturing and logistics problems every day, and now, of course, the supply chain. I've learned how to collaborate with others to solve problems, and I think through decisions with pragmatism. One other thing I do know from being in business a long time is it takes a very long time to become an expert in one's field. I'm an expert in my field. That is my full-time job. However, I only decided to run, what, like about nine months ago, and it's been a learning curve, especially in climate action. However, I am dedicated to learning everything I can about climate. I've met and interviewed with so many climate professionals and experts in these nine months. I met with Jonathan Cohen and Brett Kinkaren from the City of Boulder Climate Initiative Department. And the other thing that I'm very dedicated to is asking the experts, that's you, for advice and direction and to help guide our city forward in what might be a future, what will be a future, with difficult but necessary choices. So thank you so much for having this, and it's been really exciting to read and study and get to know so much more, and I look forward to...
Thank you very much. And next, Michael Christie.
Yeah, thank you to Empower Our Future and all the partners too for organizing this forum. This is a really great opportunity for us, and looking at the number of participants that are on this call, this is probably one of the bigger forums that we've had. My name is Michael Christie, and I too am running for Boulder City Council. I am a husband and a father of two young children. I am a family law lawyer by trade and a certified mediator. I'm also a certified collaborative law lawyer with deep roots in public service. I was a JAG officer in the United States Air Force and deployed to Kuwait and Afghanistan shortly after 9/11, where I worked on environmental law issues in a deployed location. I was an intern at the White House during the Clinton administration, and for the past three and a half years, I've been a volunteer at the Boulder Shelter for the Homeless. I also volunteer at Boulder's Community Mediation and Resolution Center, where I help mediate landlord-tenant issues, and I've also done some restorative justice cases to help teens who get in trouble. And about a little over 18 months ago, city council appointed me to sit on the Cannabis Licensing and Advisory Board, where I advise city council on issues surrounding the cannabis industry. My hope in my run for city council is to bring my skill set, particularly that as a mediator, to bring people together who have opposing viewpoints, help them find some common ground, and come to reasonable solutions. I believe that if I can bring people together in a contested family law matter, then I can do the same with people in our community. And one of the most valuable and important skills that I've learned over the course of my career is to listen to people. If you can imagine, as a family law lawyer and mediator, I often see really good people acting on their absolute worst behavior. But the way that I'm often able to get them to resolve their differences is to listen to their story, and once they feel like they've been heard, it usually opens the gates for progress and resolution. We need to be doing the same as city leaders, listening to people. There are underserved communities in our city that are disproportionately impacted by climate change.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And next, Mark Wallach.
Thank you, and thank you to all our hosts this evening. It's a pleasure to be here. For the past two years, I have served on the Boulder City Council, and I have done so in what I think has been, by all consensus, a very, very difficult time for our community and our people. It has been a very stressful period for all of us, and as we start to see some signs of recovery and our ability to move forward, hopefully in a post-COVID environment, I am running to continue to facilitate that recovery and to work with my fellow members of council in moving the city forward. Before I was on council, I was a real estate developer back in New York, and my specialty was adaptive reuse of old commercial buildings into residences. So I'm familiar with some of the issues that now we associate with the need to recycle and reuse materials. I think I have been known on council as a diligent and critically-thinking member of council, and as a result, I'm very proud that all current members of the council have endorsed me, which, given the disparities of views, I think is no mean feat. I look forward to bringing that same approach to building bridges and working collaboratively, both collaboratively, both with those who agree with me and those who don't. We have a robust climate action plan in the city. We move forward into the future, and I look forward to the opportunity to move those plans and objectives into reality. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now on to the questions. We received many versions of this first question. It is about priorities. And the first question, again, we will start this round with Nicole Spear. We, as I said, we received many versions of this question. "Climate is now code red for humanity. In Boulder, we have had over 70 air quality alert days since May. We're sucking the Colorado River dry." The question to you is, if you are on city council, how would you prioritize climate in all your decisions? In other words, how do you put climate at the front end of your decision-making process? Please give a couple of examples.
Thank you. I think this is a wonderful question. Really glad people are thinking about it. In thinking about this question, to me, it seems that we really need to prioritize having the data, that we need to understand what the potential climate impacts are of each decision, and we need to understand what those impacts may be. I haven't heard council routinely asking staff for impact assessments or accountability on our progress toward our climate goals when each decision comes up before them. I'd like to see a ballpark climate impact assessment whenever significant decisions come before council. In doing so, keeping in mind that we don't live in a bubble. Our planet doesn't really care whether a molecule of CO2 comes from Boulder or from Erie or wherever. It only cares if it's in the atmosphere or not. So this is when I think about living by the bumper sticker, which has wisdom well beyond its simplicity: Think globally and act locally. We should do our best to prioritize based on return on investment. We need to ask ourselves how much benefit in terms of carbon reduction and ancillary benefits do we get for a given allocation of money, political will, and other resources? To determine this ROI, we need a rational and data-driven approach that's as much as possible independent of our prior assumptions and pet ideas. While prioritizing is important, we have to address multiple sectors in multiple ways simultaneously, from new construction and development to transportation to how people are living. To methodically go through our priorities one by one will take time the climate can't afford for us to take. We're in an emergency, and we need all hands on deck. Every group in the city needs to be thinking about this with every decision. I also think that resilience has to be a bigger priority. I know that individual city departments are working on resilience, but we don't have a person doing citywide resilience. We don't have a single resilience point of contact for departments. In a climate emergency that's threatening more and more of us with every passing day, we need to also be asking for each major decision, how does this make us more resilient? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, the same question to Jacques DeCarlo. Again, the question is, if you are on city council, how will you prioritize climate in all of your decisions? In other words, how do you put climate at the front end of your decision-making process? Please give some examples.
Yeah, for sure. Well, climate change is the main reason I'm running for city council. Climate change has been a discussion issue for the past 20 years, and our country has done little to nothing about it. Right now, the technology for sustainable energy, green energy, is cheaper in a three-to-five-year plan than fossil fuels are, so we have to invest highly in solar panels, battery storage technology, and that sort of stuff. What we have to do is we have to push XL, because we've given our power to XL. We have to make sure XL is providing the right utilities for us and making sure that they are actively working to implement solar gardens across the city, actively working to get battery storage technology across the city so we have less blackouts. XL continues to raise rates, but doing nothing about the fossil fuels that they're using. We're still even about 60% to 70% fossil fuels, so that's a huge shift that we have to change. And then transportation, we have to look at public transportation. We have to switch all of our buses to electric vehicles, preferably autonomous electric vehicles, so that way we can cut down on cost and offer free transportation that reduces congestion across the city for workers and residents. And then, of course, single-use plastic, that's a huge polluter across the earth. It pollutes waterways, it pollutes the ocean, it kills aquamarine life, so we have to cut down on that. It's a global issue that we can impact just within our city. And if we can set an example that we're not going to use plastic, then other cities will reciprocate that. The other one is water. So in Colorado, we're headwaters to about five states' water supply, and we have to work on water conservation, because we've been in a drought for the past 10 years, and it's going to continue to get worse, as each July and each June and each August are hotter than the previous. So we have to work on water conservation with gray water recycling, so we're using half the water that we currently use and we're able to store more at the top of the water supply. Carbon sequestration is another huge one. Restoration of wetland is very important.
Thank you very much. Now, the same question to Tara Wiener. If you are on city council, how will you prioritize climate in all your decisions?
Well, the city did a great job when it came to equity. They made an equity plan, and it guides the boards and commissions. And we on the Parks Board were encouraged to look at everything through an equity lens and became a big priority. We should do the same with climate. We should look at everything through a climate lens. You know, when it comes to city government, I feel like there are always a lot of emergencies, and they really are emergencies, but most of them are near-term. So, but it's not the same as the climate emergency, which is long-term, big picture. It's life-threatening, it's planet-threatening, so somehow this emergency needs to take precedence over the other emergencies. It's really easy to get stuck in the weeds, I would imagine, in city government. So many things, you know, pop up, and you drop everything, take care of it, but we really need to prioritize climate. I will do my best to look at things through this climate lens. Like, for instance, how would a new city policy affect GHG emissions? Or how would a particular new policy decrease VMTs or increase it? Will a new regulation that we're thinking about have too small of an impact, say, on carbon reduction and not be worth the burden it is having on small businesses or those struggling to make ends meet? Because we always have to look at things through both an equity and a climate lens. You know, I learned a lot from my meeting with the city's Climate Initiatives Director, Jonathan Cohen, and he actually did discuss this very thing, how do we prioritize at the local level? Because he said the magnitude of the climate emergency is so large that we have to pull the levers that have the biggest income, and of course, that would be systems levels change, like pushing XL to move faster to renewable energies and meeting our goals, so we can meet our goals at a faster rate. And of course, working on the state level, which our city is doing. But I agree with Nicole, I really want to prioritize resilience and equity. We need to choose policies and programs that build resilience, that protect our most vulnerable population from the extreme bad air and the wildfire and fires and the drought.
Thank you very much. And next, same question, Michael Christie. How do you prioritize climate in your decision-making?
Yeah, I mean, I think Tara brings up a really good point, and that is with the implementation of the racial equity plan, that all of our policies are driven with looking through the racial equity plan lens before we make decisions. I think Boulder should be doing the same thing with the Climate Action Plan. It's one of the key frameworks that we have to use to help guide our policy decisions, and that plan itself lays out very specific targets for us to meet. I'd like to ensure that climate assessment is included at the forefront of council's policy decisions, and given the weight of the climate emergency, if I'm elected, I'll work hard to prioritize climate in almost every decision we make. And when I say every decision, I mean that, you know, climate is interconnected in almost every public policy from transportation, infrastructure, budget, public health and safety, housing. Another way to prioritize is to look at our climate goals and make sure we're keeping an eye on reaching our goals as we make our policy decisions. For example, we want to reduce greenhouse gas emissions by 70% by 2030 using the 2018 baseline. Well, we know that the two largest producers of greenhouse gas emissions in our city come from our built environment and transportation. So I would prioritize those challenges by building out our biking infrastructure to make it safer for people to travel throughout Boulder on their bikes. This would include putting up protective ballards in higher-density thoroughfares and improving our biking connectedness with more north-south bike routes. I believe this will get more people on their bikes, and we'll continue to see a reduction in our overall vehicle miles traveled. I'm not morally opposed to implementing a congestion tax for in commuters, but I do believe that there would need to be an exemption for lower-income households and Boulder resident commuters. I would also like to see us work with our neighboring cities to create a regional electric bus system. We can look to the federal government's infrastructure package that has about $39 billion specifically dedicated for public transit projects.
Thank you. And I really appreciate all of the candidates making the effort to stay to the time limit. It's really respectful for everybody. We appreciate that. Again, the same question to Mark Wallach. How will you prioritize climate in all your decision-making?
Well, not to be repetitive, but I do appreciate Tara's concept of an environmental lens in complement to the equity lens through which we already review programs and actions. I think it's a great concept. I think it's a necessary concept, and given the scope of the climate crisis, I don't think we can do any less. For me, I have several specific priorities that I'd like to pursue, one of which, of course, is electrification of our building and transportation systems. In effect, that is almost low-hanging fruit. If we can do that, we can make a serious impact on our carbon footprint generally. The current goals that we have under the Climate Action Program call for us to reduce emissions by 70% by 2030, become net zero by 2035, and carbon positive by 2040. I think those are, those goals are imperatives, and that we have to review and analyze all of our actions towards their ability to meet those goals. We need to move forward to becoming a zero-waste city by 2025, which is an objective, according to the CAP, and we need to reduce consumption-based emissions by 50% by 2030, also one of our objectives. We need to, we very much need to reform building codes, and as an old builder, this is near and dear to my heart, but we need to reform building codes to eliminate operational carbon from our building stock. Our goal is to do it by 2040, but at the same time, we have to look at incentives that will permit us to achieve the removal of operational carbon from existing buildings that will need to be retrofitted for that purpose.
Thank you very much. The next question is about transportation, and we'll start this round with Mark Wallach. "After electricity, transportation is the second-biggest contributor to greenhouse gases in Boulder. What actions would you take on council to move Boulder away from over-dependence on cars toward carbon-neutral or carbon-negative transportation, and what challenges or trade-offs do you foresee? Please be specific."
Well, there are a number of strategies we can start with. In public transportation, I would like to maximize the frequency of buses and make them smaller, and of course, electric. There's nothing more irritating than watching a large bus rolling through our streets with one passenger. It does not serve our needs. Obviously, we want to continue to promote the electrification of all vehicles. We're now in the county at 6,000 electric automobiles, which leaves us a great deal of room for improvement, and we need to do that. We need to promote alternative transportation modes, such as electric bikes, and of course, protected bike lanes that go with it. I spoke earlier about changing our building codes, and we need to do that to incentivize and require more charging stations at new residential and commercial projects and find incentives to have them installed at existing commercial and residential buildings. One of our goals in the city is to provide by 2025, 50% of all shared fleets, including taxis, ride shares, and car-share companies, to be electric. And the city is currently working with Mobility Services, the Boulder Valley School District and CU to develop a roadmap to zero-emissions electrification of all new transit and school buses by 2030. Of course, I would support that as well. And frankly, the time has come. And frankly, the time has come to rethink the use of our municipal airport, which is the source of a great deal of pollution from emissions, including lead pollution, which affects children living in neighboring housing, including our adjacent manufactured home communities. San Jose voted to do this and to close its small airport, and it's time that we did that with ours. And I will try to move forward on that project if I'm elected to council again.
Thank you very much. And now the same question to Nicole Spear. Again, what actions would you take on council to move Boulder away from over-dependence on cars and toward carbon-neutral or carbon-negative transportation? And what challenges or trade-offs do you foresee?
Thank you. I really appreciate this question because I think we are often thinking about our electric supply and not thinking about the fact that transportation is really a big contributor to our greenhouse gas emissions at the national, state, and local level. At least I hear a lot of emphasis in the community on electric vehicles as a solution, but I don't see that in my mind as a true commitment to sustainability because electric vehicles still have huge environmental impacts in terms of the environmental impact of creating the vehicles, especially when they're running on dirty energy. So while switching to electric vehicles is necessary because there are people who will need to get around, and obviously, we do need to transport things with vehicles, in my mind, it's very far from sufficient. I'd like to see us make bold changes to convert our city from one that remains fundamentally car-dependent to one we're getting around by walking, biking, or transit, our people's preferred modes of transportation. One of the first and most powerful steps I think we could take is to incrementally and equitably phase out public free parking, which is a massive subsidy for driving. We also need to make absolutely clear to our transportation and planning staff that our city must be designed to allow private motor vehicles, but that we have to stop making private motor vehicles the first priority in most places. Every time we design a sidewalk, street, or building, we need to be asking ourselves, how will this facilitate people walking, biking, and taking transit? I've been really interested by some of the micro-mobility options that are coming up, despite a little bit of frustration with the scooters on the bike paths. But I've been really grateful to see bicycle ridership explode this year as they put pedal-assisted e-bikes into their fleet. I think that as a city, we can do more to support these and really, especially to be working with companies that might be willing to give subsidies to their in commuters, so in commuters could take the bus and then use a micro-mobility option to get to their work.
Thank you very much. And now the same question to Jacques De Calo. Transportation, what actions would you take to move Boulder away from over-dependence on cars and towards carbon-neutral or carbon-negative transportation?
Yeah, it's huge, but it's really about convincing the people with commuters coming in that the time it takes to take public transportation is worth it for their money, so we have to make it free. We can't charge it for that because then if it's free, then there's incentives for people to do it. They don't really have too many restrictions. So free buses and then increased charging stations, not only for electric vehicles, but for electric bikes as well. So people are more incentivized to ride their bike around and then have areas where they're able to charge it while they're in the grocery store or on Pearl Street or something like that. And then we have to look at the way that these charging stations are set up. They have to be done on solar panels. They can't be just hooked into the grid and still relying on fossil fuels. And then we have to increase bike path, make bike paths more accessible, maybe even create an incentive for people to get electric bikes somehow with the money from the single-use plastic fee if that does pass, so that way more people will be willing to put their car down and switch to electric bike. I think the hardest thing is getting people who don't think they have the time to take public transportation, to convince them that they should take the time. So looking at the employees that are hiring these people and convincing them that they need to incentivize their employees to take the public transportation because they're creating more of a congestion issue. Large companies like Microsoft, Google, and Twitter should be at the leading front of this because they're tech companies and they have the most money compared to most other corporations in Boulder. And I think we should push Microsoft and Google to bring in some more autonomous transportation. Google has autonomous transportation. That's how they've done Google Maps. And so if we can work with them to create a system where they're bringing in transportation for their workers, and then we can also
Thank you very much. And now, same question to Tara Weiner.
When it comes to transportation, we all saying similar things, and I appreciate everybody's comments. We do need to get a lot more electric vehicles on the road to meet those climbing goals. We need to, as somebody already said, increase the prevalence of EV recharging stations. I think one transportation issue I'd prioritize would be the installation of EV chargers for multifamily dwellings such as apartments, condos, and townhomes. That's a far more difficult task than asking a single-family homeowner to put a 240-volt outlet in their garage, but I think it's really important to, it's really important to do. Of course, we need to transition our city bus fleet to electric vehicles. And if I could just digress for a moment to RTD. RTD has been disappointing, as we all know, so I'm hoping we can have regional transit. First of all, when I go door-to-door, people are always asking me, what happened to our light rail that we pay for? And that's really a good point. People want light rail. And our Transit Village no longer has the AB2 bus anymore going to and from the airport. So it says to me, we can't really depend on RTD for innovation, or so we need some new options. When it comes to VMTs, I know adding housing is crucial, but we'll never be able to provide housing for the 60,000 in commuters. So then what do we do? So like Jacques said, how can we encourage companies to reduce the VMTs of their employees, hybrid work, eco-passes, carpooling solutions, you know, van pooling would be some good ideas. And especially now, I want to spend a little time on multimodal transportation. I love my e-bike. I agree with everybody about bikes and e-bikes. How do you get more people on the road? Protected, safe bike lanes, better-lit bike tunnels. And I want to mention secure stations to lock our bikes up while doing errands so we don't have to worry about our bikes getting stolen. If we really want to push electric, we have to have a way for people to safely lock up their bikes.
Great, thank you. Michael Christie, same question.
Thanks, Chris. You know, I don't mean to sound ignorant, but I'm not aware of carbon-negative transportation, but it really piques my interest. I tried to find information on that. I wasn't able to find anything, but if that is an option, I'd love to hear more about that. I do believe that electrification of our environment is key, and this includes electrification of our personal vehicles. You know, we can get more people on bikes and foot through our built environment. And as I mentioned earlier, I'd like to see Boulder improve its biking infrastructure, making biking more safer, more appealing. I think if you look at what Washington DC has done, that's a good example of what is working in terms of making biking more appealing. I know that that city has been able to dramatically increase its biking ridership. One of the challenges, obviously, will be our winter weather, snow, but, you know, you're going to see less people on bikes, but here in Boulder, we have on average 300 days of sunshine. So I wouldn't expect this to be a huge challenge. As I had mentioned earlier, you know, I would like to see us eventually move to less reliance on RTD and move towards a regional electric bus system with our neighboring cities. Again, the challenging would be funding, but as I mentioned earlier, we could look to the federal government's infrastructure package if and when that passes, where they do have funds that are specifically dedicated to public transit. I would like to see our entire fleet of city-owned vehicles, the electric vehicles, with an increase in EV charging stations around the city. And again, as I had mentioned, I'm not opposed to a congestion tax for in commuters, but one of the challenges that I see with respect to that would possibly be the legality of an exemption if we were to include an exemption for Boulder residents or lower-income households. But we do that at our trailheads, so I don't see why we couldn't do that for Boulder residents traveling during peak travel times.
Super. Thanks very much. And I can let you know that that question about carbon negative actually came from some of our forward-looking young people at Fairview High School.
Yeah, I was wondering, did it have something to do with biofuel? Do you run your vehicle on biofuel? But very interesting.
May want to go over and talk to them, but it's definitely forward-looking.
Yes, thank you very much, Chris.
Yeah. So the next question has to do with the built environment. And we'll start this round with let's see, no, I'm sorry. I got off here a little bit. Let's see. Let's do the next question, the renewable energy goal and the Excel franchise. And we'll start this round with Michael Christie. What are your criteria for taking the option to exit the franchise in 2025? And if Boulder does not take that option, what leverage will you have council apply to ensure that we meet our 2030 goal of 100% renewable electricity? Again, we're starting with Michael.
Yeah, thanks, Chris. So some of the legislation that's going on at the state level may actually change the landscape for this. For example, Edie Hooton's Community Choice Energy. I think Excel is on the right track, but electricity is still our largest source of greenhouse gas emissions. And Excel wants to continue to rely on fossil fuels until 2039. So this is going to put us in an interesting position with respect to meeting our 2030 goal of 100% renewable energies when we're required to use Excel's default energy mix, and they plan to continue to use fossil fuels until 2039. So I question whether we're going to be able to reach that goal. With respect to criteria, I would use, you know, I'd look toward using the off-ramps that are in the agreements that would allow us to exit in 2025. It's hard to tell as I sit here today because obviously, I need to assess that data to see where we are in 2025. We need to see if it's financially sound for us to break apart from Excel. I do believe that the most guaranteed way for us to meet our climate goal is through municipalization, but we're contractually bound right now, so it's premature for me to make an assessment today. I would expect that that criteria to evaluate would be how much progress have we made toward reaching our climate goals and how much further do we have to go? If at that time, it is advantageous for us to break away, then yes, we do it. But if it's not, you know, we still have to meet our goals. So then we need to reset our climate goals and reevaluate at another benchmark. With respect to leverage, our most powerful form of leverage, I believe, is the use of the off-ramps. We have decreasing costs of renewable energies in the free market. Under our agreement with Excel, we're required to use their default energy mix and pay them a return on their capital expenditures. But if Excel continues to try to increase costs, particularly when renewables are increasing in cost, that's one more set of data we can use to exit in 2030.
Great. Thank you very much. And now the same question to Nicole Spear. What are your criteria for taking the option to exit the franchise in 2025? And if Boulder does not take that option, what leverage will you have council apply to ensure that we meet our 2030 goal of 100% renewable electricity?
Thank you for this question. I was one of those folks that was disappointed by the outcome that sent us back toward Excel. I was hoping we could head in our own direction. So for me, this is really about Excel meeting the commitments that it specified, as Michael laid out. That is what I would be looking for as well. Given that, you know, for now, we've extended our agreement with Excel, and if they're meeting their commitments, we will continue on that. Our primary path to sustainable and renewable energy at the moment is really to push Excel farther and faster toward renewable energy. To do that, I think that we should demand answers to questions like some of which Michael raised. Why are rates projected to go up when costs to produce energy are expected to go down? What will Excel do about the fact that rate increases disproportionately impact low-income communities? How will Excel get us to 100% renewable electricity? And how will Excel promote energy resilience for Boulder in the face of our climate emergency and greenhouse gas reduction goals, like by investing in more decentralized resources like microgrids? One other thing that I think about with regard to energy outside of the climate picture, my dad's a veteran, many of my relatives were in the military, so I pay attention to global threats to our national and regional safety and security, too. So I also want to know how Excel is identifying and mitigating risk from the increased threat of cyber attacks. This was one of the reasons I really wanted a municipal utility that would have allowed us to move faster toward decentralized systems like microgrids. In addition to helping us meet our renewable energy goals, be more climate-resilient, decentralized power really gives us more protection from these bigger threats. On a more hopeful note, our franchise agreement showed that Boulder can influence Excel to affect changes across a much broader region. So if we keep the pressure on Excel, I hope we can move our entire region farther and faster toward our energy goals. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now the same question to Mark Wallach. What are your criteria for taking the option to exit the franchise in 2025? And if Boulder does not take that option, what leverage will you have council apply to ensure that we meet our 2030 goal of 100% renewable electricity?
Well, in terms of what I'm looking for from Excel, obviously, the chief overriding issue is how quickly and how well they are meeting their stated objectives to reduce carbon in our energy supply. There are also a number of very specific ways in which I would want to monitor their progress. One, I would like to continue to press them to close their Comanche coal-fired plant. I know they're trying to recover their investment, but that's not really our concern. With or without Excel's support, I think we need to continue to lobby for energy choice legislation. It's currently part of our legislative goals that we set each year, and I think we need to keep moving towards that objective. We will also be looking at Excel to see how well they are working with us on various pilot projects that have the potential to be replicated throughout the city, and we'll see how reluctant or cooperative they are on that. We need to see how they are moving forward with the undergrounding of utility lines to increase our resilience to fire. We will be very closely monitoring Excel's performance as we move forward. We do have a number of different potential exit points, including the most significant one in which we can exit for any reason whatsoever. The good news on that is Excel cannot participate in that election through campaign donations, which was an important issue during the negotiations for the settlement. And with respect to the settlement, I too was a supporter of the Muni, but we decided that it was better for this community to try to come to some kind of settlement with them in light of the amounts we were spending on it, and we put it to a community vote. So we did not decide to terminate the Muni. The community itself did that.
Thank you. And now the same question to Jacques De Calo about the renewable energy goal and the Excel franchise.
Right. I would be even more interested to look at the 2023 exit option as opposed to the 2025. I think climate change is a big enough catastrophe that we have to move quicker than wait to see if they can hold out a couple more years because they are going to keep doing that because they're going to take advantage of us at every chance they get to prolong their fossil fuel use. So we have to push them to increase their standards and increase their green energy output. We have to make sure they're setting up microgrids in neighborhoods and pushing for sustainable transitions. We have to push them to install battery storage technology. They cannot be the ones holding all the power and being able to control the exchange. We have to put battery storage technology in neighborhoods so that that way we can monitor the electricity locally. We have to look at alternatives to, you know, areas where we don't have optimal solar coverage, but there's a large area like the Table Mesa Shopping Center, where we could implement large community solar grids there that provide electricity for surrounding areas in the neighborhood that might have too much tree coverage. I was a little bit bummed to come back from school and learn that Excel had won the monopoly and that we lost our opportunity to centralize our energy because that's a huge step in the transition to a sustainable society. If we learned anything from Texas, it's that these large companies are going to cut every corner they can to even claim that they're making the change, but they're going to go for the cheaper options. They're going to go for the less long-term goals. So we have to make sure that we're pushing them for the most sustainable solar panel setup, the most durable battery storage technology, and that it's going to maximize this and hopefully move us quicker than 2030. Ideally, I'd like to see it, you know, be 2025 neutral.
Thank you. Thank you. And now the same question to Tara Winder.
Well, everybody said so many great things. I don't know that I could add anything original. So thank you to everybody for your great answers. I agree that we have to remain vigilant to make sure that Excel is meeting the goals that they said they would. You know, I spent a lot of time on websites this past week studying up for this. And the Excel website says, provide customers with 100% carbon-free electricity by 2050. And reduce carbon emissions 80% by 2030 from the electricity that serves our customers while keeping your bill as low as possible. Okay, so we absolutely need to hold them accountable on every level. Including keeping our bills as low as possible, especially as somebody already said that renewable energy costs are dropping. You know, that's the problem with monopolies. There's not competition. So it doesn't really incentivize you to be innovative, to bring prices down. There's not incentives. That's why I like the idea of pressurizing Excel. By telling them we're going to use other sources for the best. To give us the best solutions. That's really worked with Excel pressure. I wish it wasn't so, but the one thing that worked on Excel was pressure. And that's who we got them to move from 20% renewables in 2019 to 80, to going all the way to 80% in 2030. But that's also why I like Edie Hooton's bill because it breaks monopolies, so to speak. You know, the Community Choice Energy and it'll allow communities to buy their own electricity wholesale from alternative suppliers like solar and wind farms. So we can get some control over our energy source, sources and costs. And then you have Empowering Our Future. That's you guys. Dedicated professionals and your website says, the city has re-entered into a 20-year franchise. Albeit with five-year off-ramps, the first being in 2025. While not the path we believe is best for Boulder or that we should. We do support maximizing that partnership, but I love. Intend to monitor or report on the city Excel agreement projects, cost and project. So go, you do that. We need public updates on city Excel agreements. Thank you for your work.
Thank you. And I can add that the Empower Future team is in the process of updating our. Tracking page on our website. So you should be seeing some new information there pretty soon. Thank you. Okay, the next question has to do with the built environment. We'll start this round with Tara. What actions would you take on council? To reduce emissions from buildings and the build environment? And what potential challenges or trade-offs, such as keeping housing affordable, do you foresee? Please be specific.
Well, I would say the built environment is what I know least about, but I'll do my best. And I, you know, I've been studying up and. I know that the majority of our buildings are heated and cooled by natural gas and then we want to move towards electricity. So we have existing buildings and we have new builds. So with the new builds, it seems like we have a lot of policy and regulation and incentivizing. And. We have to keep pushing the envelope on that new technology and Mark had a lot of great things to say about that. Our building codes to be more aggressive. With specific electrification targets. And maybe not allowing gas hookups on new buildings. Require builders to use heat pumps, but I think existing buildings are harder. I am thinking a lot about remodels. When I years ago remodeled our home, our remodeler did not give us options for electrification. We, I never even knew what a heat pump was until I started running for council. So I feel like. We need to educate the public and we might even need to educate the remodelers and the people. You know, that are doing the construction of the old homes. Because it seems to me like when you're, when you're doing those big remodel jobs, that's the time to change to electricity because it's less expensive. So I think we really need to incentivize the design firms and the remodel firms. So they can deploy, so they deploy more heat pumps and push electrifying buildings and also educate. You know, it's definitely harder to move the needle in large-scale individual action, like take solar panels. You know, it's people with more, you know, income that usually put in so, so solar panels. So the question is, is how can we get financing mechanisms? To that are so needed. So what if the utilities pay the upfront cost for installing solar panels? Or doing the energy efficiency upgrades? Cost for the fixed charge on your monthly utility bill? That is less than the savings generated by the upgrade and you wind up paying less. So I think equity, we need to think about equity as well.
Thank you. And then the same question to Mark Wallach. About the build environment.
Well, as a former builder, I'm happy to talk about the built environment. First, we need to promote the design of building. That minimize the use of concrete and steel and increase the reuse of or recycling of construction debris. And we have a goal that 75% of deconstruction waste will be recycled or reused by the end of the year. But in subsequent years, we need to go further. I also think we need to emphasize adaptive reuse over new construction. Which is near and dear to me because that's what I did as a builder. You know, I have a little bit of regret over the Alpine-Balsam project. Because of the need to deconstruct that building. And it's always been my view that we didn't properly analyze. The potential for its adaptive reuse. Unfortunately, that ship has sailed. But adaptive reuse minimizes deconstruction debris. And the new concrete. Needed for a new foundation and use of steel. So I think we need to go in that direction a little more. We have some of the most aggressive building codes around. And we hope to achieve net zero standards on all new buildings by 2035. Our challenge is going to be with the retrofits needed for existing buildings. And how we do that in a manner that doesn't raise. Rental prices and home prices for. Those of lower incomes. And we're going to have to think that through very carefully. In the future. And one last thing on the built environment. I know we have a, a goal to achieve a 20%. Tree canopy by 2035. And I think that would be. A great thing to achieve in this community, especially with respect to. Those portions of the community that. Tend to run hotter and those tend to be our underserved and lower income communities. So that's.
Thank you. And now the same question about the build environment to Michael Christie.
So, so Chris, for starters, the way the question is phrased, I, I think it's a mistake to think that this isn't either or option. When you're talking about the built environment and housing affordability. Building energy efficient structures does not have to cost a lot and it often results in buildings that are cheaper to live in once they actually are built. And I believe that we could do both. This means reducing our energy usage. Landscaping in ways that reduce water usage. Electrification is a key component. To Mark's point, let's minimize the amount of cement and steel that's used. Encouraging innovations like green roofs that will reduce energy use and don't have to be expensive at the outset. For our built environment, I recently read an article on utilitydive.com, which showed what other model cities are doing to eliminate emissions from the buildings. I would advocate for similar measures if I were elected to council, including. The restricting of natural gas infrastructure, mandating the use of electric heat pumps and, and other gas alternative, over gas alternatives. And, you know, to Tara's point, I didn't even know what it, what a heat pump was until nine months ago when I started on this journey of running for council. So. You know, some of this is new to me. Creating a decarbonation working group that places an emphasis on equity. For affordable housing. Boulder's overall rental units make up 53% of housing and, and that provides a lot of affordable housing for our community. And we were able to make our rental stock energy efficient through the implementation of Boulder's smart regs. Which became effective in 2011. This was a great way for the city to force landlords to make their rental units compliant and energy efficient. And it's, it's an inclusionary program for low to moderate income renters. The program increased tenants' rights to have energy efficient rentals. And I just read an article on the Rocky Mountain Institute. Talking about, and this is not my language, but the tsunami of technological innovations that are available to our built environment.
Thank you. And now the same question about the build environment to Nicole Spear.
Thank you. This is where I really wish that I could have heard Lauren Fulkert speak. Because sustainable design and building is really her area of expertise and I've learned a lot from her. One of the things that she talks about a lot that I have learned is just the environmental cost to construction. So as Lauren talks about, I'd really like to see us do more with incentivizing the use of sustainable materials in designing construction. I was at an Indigenous Peoples event earlier this afternoon. And the speaker was talking about how the materials we're using and the ways we're building structures are not native to this land. So are there ways that we can use the wisdom of the Indigenous people whose ancestral land we're inhabiting to build more sustainably? I'd like to see us disincentivizing people to live with cars so we can have less concrete and asphalt. I was really shocked to learn again from Lauren that part of the open space requirement for new development includes balconies and concrete patios. That didn't make sense to me. It seemed counterintuitive. How can we change the way we're designing new builds to help us lower embodied and operational energy and meet our climate goals? At the same time, the vast majority of our building stock is and will remain older. So upgrading it for better energy efficiency, as some of the others mentioned, is crucial. The smart regs program covering rental housing has been really successful and could be gradually strengthened to make sure our rental housing stock continues to become more efficient and comfortable. Meanwhile, we could use a similar model to require updates to commercial buildings. A remaining major sector is owner-occupied housing, where equity is the primary factor. Since the, those least able to make energy efficient upgrades tend to live in the least efficient houses. Improving efficiency in this sector, especially for those at greatest need. May require a new revenue source, such as a surcharge on construction of large and expensive single-family houses. Thank you.
Thank you. And now the same question to Jacques de Carlo about the built environment.
Yeah, we definitely have to look at new technologies for sustainable building. One of the projects I worked on was the Highland Hemp House in Washington, which was the Hemp Creek House. And Hemp Creek is estimated to sequester around 20 tons of carbon per build from the growth of the hemp. And then when hemp creek is drying, it actually absorbs carbon in the mold and walls as well. It's a very minimal material use build. It's hemp, calcium hydroxide, processed limestone, and then a binder additive. You can do walls, you can do hand packing, you can do preformed bricks with this. And it's actually a great material to build with in Boulder where we're at risk of fires because it's actually a fireproof material. And then, you know, we have to look at the historical housing bills and then the fees that are on top of these sort of housing bills. If you want to change doors or windows. To be more energy efficient, you have to pay. You know, a fee on top of that. And I think that incentivizes people to want to move away from that. So instead of paying, you know. $5,000 for all new windows in their house, they have to pay $10,000 on top of that. So we have to look at new ways to incentivize sustainable development in these existing houses. Increasing to solar grants is huge right now. Boulder does have solar grants, but they're for pretty low-income residents of Boulder. So we have to look at increasing solar grants to all. Income levels of Boulder to incentivize people. Just because someone has so much money doesn't mean they're not really ready to go for solar because they don't see the benefit in that. And then people that already have solar, if this grant's pushed, we have to push the grant for them to get battery storage technology. And then in new build, we have to divest from fossil fuels and look for. Solar, water heats, water heaters, battery storage and moving away from. Oil and.
Thank you. And now we received a number of questions on specific issues. Many of which go beyond the city limits. So we're now going to a lightning round. The candidates were given this list of issues in advance so they could prepare. We'll start this round with Jacques. There will be a timer on screen and I'll also prompt the candidates about moving on to the next issue. Candidates, in about 30 seconds per issue, please state your position on each issue I name. And say whether you would like to see council. Engaged on it at a local, state or federal level. And the issues we will cover. Our Community Choice Energy as proposed at the state legislature. Divestment, public banking and efforts to green public investment portfolios. Nuclear power, air quality and oil and gas regulation at the state level. Regenerative agriculture and getting closer to zero waste solutions. And again, about 30 seconds per issue. And we'll be starting with Jacques. And the first of those six is Community Choice Energy as proposed in the state legislature.
Yeah, I gave that a glance. I think it's a great idea to go for community. Electrification and our energy. Divesting in fossil fuels is one of the biggest things we can do as a society to go towards a sustainable future. We've tried to ban fracking from the state. We've tried to get rid of oil, but the oil money keeps going in. So we have to put the power in our own hands and. Take that into our stance. Am I just going rapid fire through all the questions?
Well, yeah, you've got, you've got quite a bit of time here. So. You've talked about community choice energy, a little bit about divestment. Do you want to take on the nuclear power question? What's your?
Yeah, nuclear power is a very interesting one. You know, infrastructure is a little outdated for a lot of nuclear power, but I'm not 100% opposed to it. If the infrastructure already exists and then they can be updated. It's just building new infrastructure for nuclear power is necessarily super important when we can do wind farms and solar farms, battery storage technology, especially now that batteries. Batteries are becoming more sustainable because we're switching from cobalt and graphite to silicone and nickel, which are more abundant materials. So that provides an option for more sustainability. What were the other questions?
So the next one is air quality and oil and gas regulations at the state level.
Yeah, we, we have to have higher standards of air quality regulation. We learned this year, in the past couple of years with forest fires and fracking, that we had some of the worst air quality in the world this year. So there has to be higher regulations on that. And honestly, we really should do everything we can to ban any oil mining in this state. It contaminates water, it contaminates land. And then these companies, you know, will either go bankrupt or just disappear without any cleanup and create more disasters to that. So we have to do everything we can to move away from oil.
And then next about regenerative agriculture.
Yeah, regenerative agriculture is huge. You know, the meat industry and the cattle industry is a huge producer of methane gases. So we have to look at ways that allow for more regenerative agriculture with open range cattle. And then we have to look at the feed that we're giving these animals. So like alfalfa, for example, is a huge feed commodity, but it uses. Five times more water than hemp wood and hemp is a great grain alternative for feed.
Finally, just a few minutes, seconds left, getting close to zero waste solutions.
Yeah, zero waste solutions, we have to ban single-use plastic. We have to put a fee on that to incentivize people to not want to buy that. We have to make it at a point cost that high enough that incentivizes people to get away from it, but not so high that people who don't have the money or are.
Thank you. Okay. And then the same set of lightning round questions to Michael Christie. And the first one is Community Choice Energy as proposed at the state legislature.
I fully support it, Chris. I think this will allow Boulder to purchase our own energy load and move further away from fossil fuels. But the devil's in the detail. So we need to make sure that the agreement with Excel allows us to use their infrastructure. But still have transmission, distribution and billing run through Excel without degradation of services. There's a lot of evidence to suggest that this will bring down costs so we can mitigate the financial impact to lower income households. And we can look at cities like Palo Alto where community choice energy is an example of a system that works.
And then what about divestment, public banking and efforts to green public investment portfolios?
Fully support it. You know, as a result of the worldwide climate emergency, the future is going to be green. So our investments should be moving towards green investment portfolios. These will be the types of investment portfolios for city and community members, the best types. Further with public banking, a public bank typically supports the interests of the community. That they serve and not the interest of their shareholders, unlike private banks, which finance the fossil fuel industry and disproportionately harm communities of color.
Great. And then what about nuclear power?
I'm not convinced that that's the best option for Boulder. To Jacques's point, I think we have other sources that we can rely on. The sort of nuclear power that America has deployed in the past 70 years is not the sort of power I think we need to be using. These powers were paid for by the Department of Defense for use of plutonium and nuclear bombs designed to produce nuclear waste. There are new technologies like thorium reactors and molten salt reactors that I think are much safer. And can produce no carbon emissions, but I think, you know, again, we have other sources that we can rely on. But I think, you know, again, we have other sources that we can rely on that are inherently safer.
Okay, and then just moving along, air quality and oil and gas regulation at the state level.
Critical, I fully support it. We need to be lobbying hard to get our leaders at the state level to pay closer attention to our health and air quality over special interest groups. Natural gas producers, particularly from fracking, have little incentive to reduce their leakage of methane, which is a dangerously potent greenhouse gas.
And then regenerative agriculture?
Fully support it, but using less fertilizer and rotating crops, I think that's a great idea. But most of our agricultural lands in eastern Colorado outside the city of Boulder, so I'm not sure how much impact the city will have on this issue.
Okay, and then getting closer to zero waste solutions.
You know, this is where I think Boulder can really make a dent, particularly around single use plastics, which which Jacques alluded to. Single use plastics drive me crazy. We should ban them in our city, particularly in restaurants and grocery stores where they can be replaced with compostable products. I recognize we may not be able to get national brands to change their packaging, but as a city, we can control our own waste disposal. We need to be composting and recycling where we can.
Thank you very much. And now the next, that same series of questions to Tara Weiner. And the first, first one is community choice energy as proposed at the state legislature.
Well, so I don't repeat myself. You already know that I'm for it. I think it's a great idea because especially the whole monopoly thing that we need to do something about. And it'll give us more, you know, it'll just give us more options and we'll get more control back. So yes, on that.
Okay, and then divestment, public banking, and efforts to promote green public investment.
You know, that's a really interesting question. How do you make societal changes? And start investing because something is good for the community or good for the planet as well as profitable. Profitable versus something that is just profitable. So it's going to take a culture change and a societal change to change the way we, you know, Americans invest in even Coloradans and Boulderites. So we need to take a close look at how we're investing and what we're investing in and definitely try to divest ourselves. And to be aligned with what's good for the planet and also good for the community. I have a friend, Quinn Antis. She is on the Boulder website, Boulder, Colorado website and the climate page, and I love what she says. She said. We should be thinking about how to make doing the right thing, the financially attractive and political, politically viable choice. And she said investors want to be moving their money toward investments that are better for the planet and better for the community. But we need to make sure nothing's hindering that, like regulations and.
So let me ask you now about nuclear power.
Yeah, nuclear power. Well, I'm not exactly excited about nuclear power, but I would say I'm going to agree with Jacques. I don't think we need it. We are a leader of clean tech here in Colorado. And if we could get to our goals without it, like for instance, hydrogen, green hydrogen and geothermal, I think that that would be better just. For so many reasons that I'm sure everybody here knows.
And then air quality and oil and gas regulation at the state level.
You know, the regulatory body body here in Colorado is doing a great job. We have to, like everybody said, there's just too much air pollution. And we had what the highest rates in the world at some points this summer. Sometimes a lot of people, just companies, corporations won't listen to. They just won't do it on their own without regulation. So I feel that regulation is an important thing.
And then quickly, regenerative agriculture?
Yeah, I I love the idea of regenerative agriculture. We do have some agriculture, you guys, like in our open space, what is like forty or so percent of our open spaces agriculture? I think it's a great way of sequestering carbon, and I think it even might promote better food systems, although I do need to read up more on that, but I'm definitely.
And then finally, zero waste solutions.
We are so fortunate to have EcoCycle, Western Disposable Charm, Resource Two Thousand, these great, these great organizations. I agree with everybody on plastics.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and now the the lightning round goes to Mark Wallach. And again, starting with community choice energy as proposed at the state legislature.
Well, it's being studied at the state level, and we need to advocate for its implementation. The community choice has worked elsewhere and is a pathway towards sourcing completely renewable energy for our electric system. Utilities don't like the prospect, but this is an area in which market based solutions can provide a great benefit to Boulder.
Then divestment, public banking, and efforts to green public investment portfolios.
Obviously, I'm in favor, but one specific thing I want to mention is that Boulder has taken the position. That the state should lift the current ban on depositing our funds with credit unions. We also need to work with other municipalities in the county so that we can increase our leverage with respect to the deposit and investment of our funds.
And then nuclear power?
I'm going to save some time here because this is one of the easiest questions I've had in two months. And the answer is fission, no. Fusion, yes.
Okay. And then air quality and oil and gas regulation at the state level.
Yeah, at the state level, we need to to regulate these industries with a view towards dealing with the air quality issues we've been experiencing all the time. But at a local level, we also need greater home rule authority to regulate these industries within our borders. If it's the will of our community and our county to prohibit the activities of the oil and gas industry. We should have the right to do so. These are life, health, and safety issues, and we should be free to regulate as we see fit.
And then regenerative agriculture?
You know, it's Boulder's goal to remove fifty thousand tons of CO2 annually by twenty thirty. Through forest, urban tree, and soil landscape restoration. As it is our goal also to reduce urban heat islands in energy burden neighborhoods by one percent. We also need more projects, local projects like Jack's Solar Garden, which combines community solar with regenerative agriculture. There's a lot more potential there that we haven't tapped.
Okay, and getting close to zero waste solutions.
Well, as as others have noted, we just piloted a program for reusable carryout containers. And by twenty twenty three, it's our objective to divert eighty five percent of our waste from landfill. And by twenty twenty six, to eliminate all food waste from landfill. You know, it's also our goal to by twenty twenty three, I think, to reduce waste per capita by ten percent against the twenty fifteen baseline. I support all of those. And as I discussed earlier, we need to dramatically reduce construction waste, particularly the waste from deconstruction of existing buildings.
And thank you very much. And now that same set of lightning round questions to Nicole Spear. And the first one is community choice energy as proposed at the state level.
Thank you. I think we do need to keep lobbying this at the state level. To me, it's a good idea as long as it results in real carbon reductions. I also want to make sure it doesn't put undue burdens on lower income communities, as others have referred to. I'm privileged enough that I can handle a five dollar increase in my utility bill, but that's not true for some of the lower income workers, retirees, and disabled folks who are just scraping to get by each month.
Okay, divestment, public banking, and efforts to green public investment portfolios.
Yes. If you want to see what an organization values, you look at both where it spends its money as well as how it makes its money. I'm a really big fan of socially and environmentally just investment, banking, and other financial efforts that we could do at a city level. To make sure that we're supporting carbon reductions and sustainability at a bigger level.
Right, nuclear power?
So we are in a climate crisis. So in my opinion, when you're in crisis, no solutions can be off the table. There's some promise of new forms of nuclear power that could be safer and maybe produce less waste than older designs. It's not my favorite thing. Those are likely decades from fruition at best. In the meantime, we really need to stay focused on what we can do here and now to address our emissions.
Air quality and the oil and gas regulation at the state level.
This is an area where I feel like the police administration has failed us. We had so many ozone action days this year, more than any other place in the state. But I feel like we, somebody's been trying to distract us from ozone, which is locally sourced. And refocus on particular pollution from faraway fires, which we can do little about. I'd like to see us at a city level keep pressure on the state to take ozone in particular deadly seriously because it's a deadly serious problem.
And regenerative agriculture?
So I think here we should really look for ways to encourage carbon sequestering agricultural techniques, as others have mentioned on open space. Especially the parts that are tilled. The Land Institute of Salina, Kansas, has been working for decades on perennial versions of annual food crops that would require far less tillage. Again, since it's Indigenous Peoples' Day, I just want to note that we can also look to indigenous tribes who stewarded these lands for thousands of years before our ancestors stole them.
Thank you. And then finally, getting close to zero waste solutions.
This one I find really interesting as a cognitive neuroscientist, because I know there are lots of ways to shape people's behavior into the behaviors that we want them to see. I'm going to refer to Lauren again because as an architect, she also knows a lot about this as well. Having a single stream waste processing system is expensive, and it would go farther than anything to help us meet this goal. Because people don't have to change their behavior. And generally, a reward based process is going to be more effective than a punishment one. So I'm really curious about whether we could offer incentives for businesses. That are significantly reducing their waste. We may already do this. I don't know. I would love to learn more about that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And then our last question, many citizens wanted to ask. What is your personal motivation for taking climate action? And what are you doing personally to fight against climate change? And we will start this with Nicole. And one minute, please.
Thank you. This is such an important question. I think, you know, the first time that I kind of picked up. My head and really dove into the fact that, you know, we were already in a climate emergency was when my daughter was born and I became a mother. And I realized that she was going to inherit this planet that we are leaving, and it's quite a mess. So that my kids honestly are my motivation. Also, because I work at the university, I work with a lot of younger kids. And frankly, given the state of our climate emergency, it amazes me that they get out of bed every day. So this is part of my motivation for running for council is bringing that urgency that we so desperately need for living in an emergency. And hopefully bringing some of my leadership and management and crisis management skills in particular. To make sure that we are staying laser focused on the goal of reducing our emissions as well as. Creating a community that is going to be resilient in the face of the rising climate disasters that we're going to be experiencing and that our children and future generations will experience. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, same question about what motivates you and what are you doing personally to fight against climate change? And it's Jacques de Carlo.
Yeah, climate change is the main reason I decided to run for city council. I want Boulder to be a leader around the world for climate action and show how durable it is. Currently, I work for Tesla, which has the goal to accelerate the world's transition to sustainable electricity. So every day I go to work trying to convince people to get electric vehicles, trying to convince people to get solar panels, solar tiles, and battery storage technology on their house. I'm a strong activist for the, strong activist for climate change. I participated in the March for Science when Donald Trump was elected president. I went to Standing Rock in twenty sixteen to protest the pipeline that could contaminate water supplies and also. Was built on sacred burial lands of the Sioux Nation. So I'm constantly on all fronts. I've significantly cut down my meat intake and seafood intake as those are huge contributors to climate change as well.
Thank you very much. And next, Tara Weiner.
Well, I would say it's my granddaughter's. One is two and a half and the other one is on the way and I can't, I'm so worried. You know what I spend a lot of my time doing? Worrying, worrying about fires, worrying about floods, worrying about my grandchildren, what are they going to do? So instead of worrying, I decided to run for city council. That would be a better idea. One thing that I really care about and worry about is resilience. So I want to do something about resilience. I want so badly for us to be prepared for the fires, the floods. We need to do something about the air. You know, I'm on their parks and rec boards. So usually for me, what I do is go on a board, try to make a difference that way. And of course, parks and rec is great for climate. Parks are wonderful and I really care about trees. So I want to increase our urban canopy by a lot. I love trees. So that's one of my goals and that's what I want to do.
Thank you. And same question to Michael Christie. What do you, what do you motivate you and what are you doing?
Like Nicole and Tara, I'd say I'm really motivated by my children. I would say my awareness of climate. Really happened or began when I was a child where I spent most of my life surfing in the ocean. And too often, I'd come home to find black tar stuck on the bottom of my feet. So that evolved into an awareness of pollution all over our beaches. And then I just started to notice like the plastic six pack can holders stuck around. You know, they'd be in the sand, they'd be floating in the water, then you'd see them stuck around the necks of seagulls and seals. So I took it upon myself as a child to try to remove every plastic bottle, every six pack ring and plastic bag that I could find from the ocean and off of our beaches. I try to impress upon my children the importance of being aware of their environment and really doing what they can to have an impact. You know, it's really interesting. I met a psychologist a few weeks ago who told me about a host of new patients that she's been having. From CU who are experiencing climate anxiety.
Thank you. And Mark Wallach, what's motivating you and what are you doing personally?
The reason I first ran for council, the reason I'm running for reelection to council is to build a better community. Now, that doesn't stop and end with climate action, but obviously, climate action is one of the key components of making our community better. I remember the twenty thirteen floods, as we all do, and I remember, I think it was twenty fourteen, when I was watching fires on the sides of the Flatirons. And this is obviously not an acceptable condition for us to live in and for us to bequeath to our children. I think my actions are going to be judged by what I do on council. I've been a supporter of the Climate Action Program. I think it's well thought out. I think it's aggressive. And I look forward to implementing it over the course of time if I am returned to council. And those are the kinds of things that are moving me. And the reason I'm going through the unpleasantness of running.
Thank you very much. This has been the Empower Our Futures Empower Hour, number two, a climate and energy forum with the candidates for Boulder City Council. We'd like to thank all the candidates and our affiliated organizations, and most of all, you, Boulder's engaged citizens. Please join us again on Thursday, November eleventh at six P M. For the Empower Hour to hear John Farrell, guru of distributed energy, speak about local power. Thank you and good evening.